Hi, good evening. I'd like to open up the meeting at 7:07 before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to bring everyone up to date. As you know Chairman Shumpert who's no longer on the Board of Selectmen did a fantastic, great job. So what happens is we don't have a chairman at the moment, so at 8 o'clock we'll have a brand-new chairman, permanent for the year. So it's the next person in line who's most senior person. So I'll just guide us through until 8 o'clock until we have the reorganization of the board. So I just want everybody to know that everything's still fine. All right, so I'd like to, if we all could take a moment to pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we can start off at transmitting of the Treasury Warrant, number forty-three, forty-three A, forty-four, forty-four A, forty-five, and forty-five A. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Motion made by Selectmen, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it from Selectmen Loud? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Selectmen Bendel. Are those in favor?
Unanimous.
We don't have any minutes to approve. Why don't we get in right to our seven o'clock appointment. Correct me if I pronounce the name wrong. Demetrius G. Saragus, on behalf of Wilmington Heavenly Donuts, L.D., doing business as Heavenly Donuts, you're going to request a common eviction license for the property located at 579 Main Street. And I hope I said the name.
Yeah, good.
All right, good, then you're all set then. Why don't you take a seat right over here to the left.
How you doing?
Good evening, welcome to the town. So if you want to just basically tell us what you're going to be doing, then I'll go to the town manager when it comes to the advice relative to the department head. So why don't you introduce yourself and what you're looking to do?
My name is Demetrius Saragus, on behalf of Heavenly Donuts. We recently purchased the store located at 579 Main Street from William Schofield. We're just looking to continue doing business as usual, hopefully better and cleaned up and bringing a lot of new items into the store and making a great addition to the town.
You know, it's a great donut shop, there's no question about it. So why don't I just go to Jeff and I'll go to the membership if they have any questions. Jeff, any reports from our department heads?
Yes, I have a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, Health Director. I recommend approval of the application for common eviction license submitted by Demetrius Saragus, Wilmington Heavenly Donuts, 579 Main Street. Also, recommendation from Al Spalding, Inspector of Buildings. After review and consideration of the Town of Wilmington bylaws and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above-mentioned business.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, any questions from the board, Mr. Bendel?
Thank you. Good evening, thanks for being here. Just a couple of quick questions. You said make a couple changes, updates, anything changing on the hours or the...
We're gonna, currently they're closing at 6:00 PM. I think we're gonna go to 7:00 PM and see how that does, and perhaps 8:00 PM, just to bring some more business into the building, you know, create some more revenue for all of us.
And maybe in terms of the menu, I know you mentioned some possible changes.
Yeah, we're just adding some new items. I've been, my family started the company forty-five years ago, so I've been carrying on. And we do a lot of different items, pastry, baked items at our other stores that the Wilmington location was not doing. So I've been bringing some of that stuff in over the past week, week and a half. And we had a great weekend. It was, it seems like the word is starting to spread a little bit, so it's been, it's been good, it's been pleasant.
Well, I only ask specifically because my wife and I are big fans of the fruit smoothie, so as long as that's still on the menu.
Yep, still, we're gonna add some new flavors, so.
Okay. Well, I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to Wilmington.
Thank you.
Selectmen Power, go ahead.
Other than you mentioned that you're the original owner of?
Correct.
So up in Methone, when you first started in Methone and built out from there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Fantastic, great.
Great.
Fantastic. Anybody else?
Best of luck, was, you follow them on Salem Street?
My uncle lives on Salem Street, yes.
Sorry for your loss, I know he just passed away not too long ago.
Correct, thank you.
It's a great place and best of luck in town, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic.
And no questions, just best of luck.
Thank you very much.
I'd say you heard about the cakes and pastries, sound like a little bit of good therapy there.
Yes, definitely, for sure.
All right, and also there's no other questions from the board. I intend to entertain a motion to grant the common eviction license. Is there a motion? Motion made by Selectmen Eaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen Bendel. Are those in favor? Unanimous, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You have, you do, you got great donuts.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, 7:10 to 7:20, Karen Campbell, Recreation Director. We're gonna talk relative to the field use policy. The director? Hi Karen, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good, good. I see, it's all you right now, go right ahead.
All right, thank you so much. I'm here because we have not previously had a use policy in place for the fields, primarily April Field, Palmer Field, Rotary Park Baseball Field, and the Whitfield Field. We have just had a very successful implementation of the use policy for Yentile that we were very concerned about, making sure we protected the turf, making sure that everything was in place. And it's recently become more of a problem that we don't have a policy for our other fields because with the popularity of Yentile, many groups, both formal and informal, are coming to us and saying, "All right, we see that Yentile's busy, but do you have something else in town?" And there are also just increasing numbers of people that have, word has gotten out that Wilmington does not charge for use of our fields. That helps us because we don't have the liability issues that other towns do when you do charge. But at the same time, it makes it more attractive for groups to approach us. So we come to, the Recreation Commission voted on March 1st to put forward this particular use policy that you should have a draft of, to hopefully get us going with the right direction, to give us some direction as to how to handle different requests of different groups. And the other thing that had happened is that there have been groups that have had longstanding permits every year at some of our fields, and some of them have changed over the years, as they do. And at this point, we're not sure that the intended use, the intended users of the field are the people that are the residents of the town and sometimes employees of companies in town. So we want to make sure that we're bringing that back to make sure that we're providing a service primarily for residents, and certainly possibly for employees of companies in town. So this particular policy is very similar to what most of you saw when we looked at the Yentile use policy. The major differences would be the user priority list, the fields that we permit first go to Wilmington Public Schools. They always have right to bump other groups if they have anything going on at any of these locations. That's been a longstanding practice in town. The second user priority group would be the youth sports groups, and that would be to make sure that Little League still continues at Rotary Park, for example. Pop Warner and Little League would be out here at April Field. Third Recreation Department, I have to advocate and put us in there. And then followed by other nonprofit community groups that would have varying degrees of, or percentages of Wilmington residents. And then finally, if there was availability, a for-profit entity, maybe one of the companies in town that wanted to have, have something at a field. The other big change from the Yentile policy is that we're not putting in here at the time a carry-in, carry-out policy. The big student youth organizations do currently carry in and carry out. They do take care of their own trash, they do a really good job of it. If there's an issue that has to be addressed, DPW does feel that when we've reached out to them, they have cleaned up their act, and we, when we've been able to work with them to make sure that those big users are handling their trash. But there are still barrels at these fields so that for non-permitted casual use, people do have a place to throw out trash. Those are the major differences between this and the Yentile policy. There's not a lot to it, but I feel that enacting some kind of a policy would give us a really good way to handle all of the requests that come into the Recreation Department for field use.
Okay, very good. Well, let me just say Karen, you do a fantastic job as director, and everybody works on the Rec Department, so customer-friendly, I just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
So I'll go to my left, to the members, any questions or comments? I'll start with Mr. Loud, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had, I wrote down a couple of questions before you got here. What about the school fields? Who, like Shawshin, Shawshin, do you permit that? I know it's youth soccer.
Yeah, the schools do permit their own fields.
They do, okay.
Themselves, yes.
I have to agree with Mr. McCoy, you do an excellent job, your whole department does. And this was well drafted, and I have no questions on it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good job.
I have no questions myself, I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
And I'll just go to my right, over here.
Karen, have you noticed any problems in, with the fields, any conflicts or anything that that's why you need to do this? Or just you're trying to streamline it?
I'm just really trying to give us a little direction. One thing that has happened as one, as some of the groups have morphed over the years, is that we're not sure that we are now serving residents. So we're just wondering, without a policy, there's no sense to even ask, really, you know, who is using the fields. With a policy, we can be asking percentages of residents, things like that, just to make sure that it's being used by the people that we had intended.
Right, and you permit it now?
Yes, we do.
And if, so if there's any conflicts out there in the field, have you noticed, like, there'd be a group on the field and another group that has the permit comes on and says, you know, "You guys gotta get out of here, and this is our field," type of thing? Have you had any of those issues?
Very, very minor. I, for the most part, they've worked it out. I think there's, at April Field, there's some back-to-back groups that use it. Sometimes they get pushed back because of a high school softball game interfering with a men's league, which is followed by another men's league. But I think for the most part, they're friendly neighbors to each other. And every once in a while, there's been a question, and we clarify.
Yeah, no, and the only reason I ask is because, not that I want to put signs everywhere, you know, I didn't know if, you know, this field is by permit only by the Town Recreation Department, if that needed to go out there to stop any conflicts or something like that, that would be my only thought.
It's a thought.
Great, I'll sit.
Yes, hi Karen, thank you for putting this together with the Rec Department. My only question is maybe for the benefit of the residents, if we could just explain to them the permitting process. So like, I would assume we'd contact the Rec Department, so would you like to encourage people to stop in? Is it something they're gonna be able to do online? Is it phone call, email? How can we tell residents how to go about that?
That's a great question, thank you for that. Because one of the things that we would like to do if we have a policy is to be able to put it on our website, as well as an application for permits, and then people could access the information the same way they do for Yentile.
Great. And how about just, I mean, just, I don't mean to spot you, but maybe an estimated turnaround time? So if someone says, "Hey, our softball team wants to, needs a place to play," you know, what timeframe, is something they could do within a week, a month?
We have, we have asked for permits to be received in the department in a, in a kind of a strict manner, so to speak. We've asked for spring permits, or any seasons that are beginning between April 1st and June 30th, to be submitted to the department in January, and summer would be in March, and fall, fall seasons beginning after September 1st would be submitted in May. Certainly, after that month where we're gathering the permit requests, we turn them around within about a week after that month. And absolutely, if another group comes up that hasn't requested before, we would certainly enter, if the field is not being permitted and it's approved by DPW especially, to make sure it's not being overused, then we would also add, outside of our window, we would still offer permits.
Great. This seems very reasonable to me. I think that'd be great, if residents were able to apply for a permit online in the future, I think that would be really advantageous. So thank you for putting this together.
Sure, thank you.
Just one other thing, Chairman, I know in the, and this again goes to a lot of rules is probably no good sometimes, but when we made up the Yentile field rules, and I know we put in there something about only coaches, players, and officials were allowed on the playing field, I know that it's not on this, I don't know if that was something, because I know Rotary Park is an enclosure.
Right.
And, you know.
We really did that to protect the turf.
Right.
We could certainly do that.
Okay, that's, and that's what I figured.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We could add that if you felt like that would be a good...
No, I just was wondering why it wasn't in there, doesn't matter really, I suppose. And just to go off of this, to Yentile, I know I've received a few phone calls, and you have yourself, and I happened to go down on Saturday to watch a soccer game because a neighbor invited me to take a look. And there was several lawn chairs on the turf field with the single legs that were digging in. And I went over and very nicely asked them that they're not supposed to be on there, and they said to me, "Well, it's not part of the rules." And I said, "Well, yeah, it is, no shop objects." But when I read the rules, actually, no lawn chairs, it was not on the rules. But it did say no shop objects, which were the chairs. So I'm wondering if we need to be more specific with that, because they are taking advantage. And I hate to see that turf field to be ripped by someone from a, and they, actually, they weren't Wilmington fans, they were from the opposing team at the time. But I think that the Wilmington coaches still need to make themselves known to the opposing coach and say, "If your fans are on the field with lawn chairs, then they should be off." And actually, a gentleman said, "Yeah, they don't allow lawn chairs on the turf field in our town." So I was surprised we were able to come on here. So that may be something we don't...
Maybe because we were a nicer community?
Yeah, yeah. So you may want to consider penciling that.
We have, yeah, we have reached out to the youth sports organizations and asked them to have their coaches please convey these kind of rules to their teams. And we have talked about lawn chairs specifically as well, and we keep updating the leagues, asking them to please, especially with their visiting coaches, to convey the rules.
Thank you.
So Kevin, do you have any comment at all?
No, I think it's all been said.
Karen, all the questions, all the comments are made. I appreciate you coming here this evening, and once again, you guys do a great job down there. Thank you.
So what, just what I would be looking for is a vote by the board that would authorize this policy to take effect. Now, we're, just one point, I guess I would note, is that the plan is that for groups signing up for use of the fields as of 1-1 next year, this policy would, the proposal is that this policy would be in play.
Somebody like to make a motion as described by the town manager?
If I could just add one more thing, in terms of just letting folks know, groups, teams, pickleball groups, for example, we're just gonna let the residents know. I'm sure you guys will put out some type of press release to let folks know of the new change.
Yes, and we thought if there was an implementation date of January 1st, that would give us time to reach out to current groups, especially some that maybe don't have a Wilmington resident who is pulling the permit, or seeing somebody representing the group that works in town.
Thank you.
Give them time.
All right, fantastic. Is there a motion?
Some, some, I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Selectmen Loud, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen Eaton, are those in favor? Unanimous. Karen, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you all, very, very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Good job, Karen.
Our next appointment is Valerie Garant, the Director of the Planning and Conservation Commission, interministerial agreement for the Regional Housing Service Office. Valerie, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the agreement in front of you for fiscal year nineteen and twenty. It's for our Housing Service Office. It's housed in Redding, and we share that office with Redding, North Redding, and Saugus. This is the third agreement that we've been a part of. And since the Housing Office was started in 2014, that office has been really helpful to me and my department in monitoring our affordable units, in creating a database with all of the documents that are involved, doing paperwork for resales and refinancing, so all of kind of the daily tasks, along with helping us with research, and all of the things that come up as far as regulatory agreements with Avalon. And they'll be very helpful this year when I'm putting together my research for inclusionary zoning. So I can answer any questions about details, but it's my recommendation that we continue with this agreement. It's a great way to have part-time staff without hiring someone ourselves. And those, we have bimonthly meetings with the towns, and those meetings turn out to be a really good forum and discussion about housing issues in general.
All right, thank you. I'll go to this side of the table, Mr. Bendel, Mr. Kyra, anybody who'd like to start, any questions or comments?
Valerie, I know in one of the previous meetings, I brought up how the individual wasn't located here, located in, was it North Redding? And why weren't they coming here for office hours? And I noticed that that had changed.
Yeah, actually she...
That she's coming here.
Yeah, Laurie, her name is Laurie Stanton, and she, her office is in Redding. And she comes to town once or twice a month, and we advertise those dates and times. You know, mostly she's kind of a resource for me as far as paperwork and things like that, internal things and administrative things. But she's also a great resource for people if they want to stop by, or sometimes they'll see the ad and they'll just remember to call her. So it's a great little reminder for residents if they have an affordable unit and they want to talk to her about, you know, potentially refinancing, or something like that. And she also keeps a list of interested buyers, that if a unit comes up for sale, she kind of sends that out to everyone on the list, and keeps people apprised of any new units.
So just once or twice a month she comes?
Yeah, typically. It's, because we have, so we have a certain number of hours per week and per month, and so that's accounted for. She does typically two mornings per month here at Town Hall. But she's available by phone at any time.
And I noticed that the Town of Redding website has offers to the residents, a website that they can go on, the Metro North Regional Housing Service Office, www... But it's, they have to go on that Redding website. Is, can they access it through our website? I mean, why do we have to have our residents in Wilmington go on the Redding website to get information?
So we have a link from, we have a link from our website to Redding's website. We looked at making a separate website for the Housing Office, so that they wouldn't have to be kind of hosted on one of our town's websites. But it turned out that the cost was a little bit too much, I think, for what it would provide. So we decided that for now at least, Redding would host that site, and we would all link to it, understanding that it's, you know, on their, on the Town of Redding's website, but is a separate Housing Office.
Okay. And it's easily accessible if we go on our website?
On our website, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, I noticed that the percentages and the expenses that we seem to take on the major burden of it. How come? I mean, she's only here two mornings, maybe a month?
So, yeah, so what we did was, so we have more affordable units than the other towns. And we're actually the only town in that group that's currently above 10%, which is great.
I'm gonna quote you on that, we have more affordable units, and we're the only town above 10%.
We do.
Okay, as long as the people out there here.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Well, Redding's catching up though, so we've got some work to do. So, but when they set it up in 2014, they based it on the number of units, just thinking that, you know, it's probably a reasonable way that more units is gonna be more time to manage those units. And so that's how it was set up. And then over the years, we've been tracking actual time spent. So when issues come up, she's logging her time, and we reviewed the times for fiscal years sixteen and seventeen, and did an average of those. And that's the number, the 36% is what you see, relates to actual time that she spent on our units.
So she's working in Redding, but giving us more time in Wilmington?
Yes, absolutely.
As you were saying?
Yeah, no, and it's not, like I said, it's, her, her function is mostly for, actually, kind of for me, as far as she fills out paperwork for refinancing, she does all of the, sort of the administrative work that has to do with the affordable units.
And she can help out individual residents that need that particular paperwork to be filled out, too?
Right, so when someone wants to refinance, they'll call us, they'll call her, and we'll get that paperwork going. But she kind of takes the, takes the bulk of that work and does that. And she does that from Redding, but for us.
Is there a sliding scale if all of a sudden, North Redding, Redding, and Saugus shoot up above us, and we stay at a level amount of affordable housing, or dip a little bit? So do these percentages change, and our payouts change?
Yeah, so each, each agreement, we're looking at the percentages over the past two fiscal years to create the new agreement.
Right, I know, we're creating a new agreement, but during the timeframe of the new agreement, is it a sliding scale so that it adjusts? So if it's, you know, we're signing, potentially signing a two-year agreement, if after the first year, all of a sudden the others jump up above us, are we still tied into paying the bulk of the money? Or is it, is this gonna be, should we put in language in this that adjusts those figures upon the fiscal year? Maybe not halfway through, but just so that we're not paying the burden for other people's...
What we've done, yeah, no, what we've done instead is we keep an eye on the numbers, and if they're looking like we need to use more hours, we pull Laurie into our office and get her to help us with some of the file work that needs to be done, some of the administrative work. So we're sort of balancing out the hours to, to take advantage of her for our hours, to make sure that we get the number of hours that we were paying for. So we don't have, in this agreement, we don't have a, a technical way of sort of readjusting those amounts. You know, it's, it's hard to do that because of budgeting, and, and it's a two-year agreement, but we do make sure that the hours are being used fully. And there's plenty of work to do, so that's not, it's not too difficult.
It's a one-person office?
Yes. I mean, I, she doesn't have a, it's within Redding Town Hall, is her office, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was an assistant.
No, she, she does everything.
Okay.
I was just gonna make you all sit down. I was just gonna touch upon what Kevin was saying earlier, he really hit the nail on the head. But when I was looking at it, there were four communities, and you said we're above the 10%. And I get it, she's probably doing a fantastic job, really, helping those folks that really need assisting. And I, and I do support that. But obviously, we're paying almost double what Saugus is paying. And Saugus is a pretty huge community. And I was just thinking it'd be more fair, obviously we're gonna have the two-year contract, but it'd be a lot more fair. If we're paying 36%, and somebody like Saugus is paying 17, I thought maybe down the road, if it would be fairly 25, 25, 25, we're above the 10%. And I'm sure you utilize her. But on those communities that are below the 10%, they, they would probably utilize her more than we would, I would assume, because they're below the 10%. We're at a comfort level right now. And it's just temporary, over the 10%. I just, I know there's contracts carved in stone, I know we have to commit to that, but I was just thinking the future, that'd be fair across all the communities. And just to touch upon what he said, that everyone pays her a fair share. And I think it's a well-programmed, but in the future, I think we really need to look at that, that's all. And it's well-service needed. Any of you gentlemen, sit a little up.
I just, if you don't mind, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I noticed in the contract, I don't have a problem with the contract, but you mentioned Avalon Oaks and Avalon Oaks. What about the other, like Whispering Pines and Metro and Regency? Is she monitoring those affordable units for us also, in the future of Spruce Farm? Would she be monitoring all that stuff for us, too?
So all of the other apartment buildings, Metro, Regency, that's it, those are still monitored by the state. So they're, for, while their, their loans are still being paid off, they're monitored by the state. And when Avalon, both Avalons were one of the first developments built, their loans have been completely paid off. So at that point, the town becomes the monitoring agent.
I see.
So those are the, those are two rentals. Laurie and I visit those every year, go through files, look at the background, income verification documents, to make sure that the folks who are in those units meet the income levels. We do that every year. And then the home ownership units is, she sends out letters every year to everybody who owns a unit. And it's kind of a self-declaration letter, asking them to fill it out, return it, just to kind of make them aware of some of the things that they need to do if they want to refinance, if they want to resell their unit. There's a process that they have to go through. So it's kind of informational, but it's also kind of asking them to verify that, you know, they, they acknowledge that it's an affordable unit. We get... We get some measure of success with those, but mostly I think it's just the information for them. And then with the homeownership units, they are only, the income is verified only when they purchase it. And then when they want to sell the unit, there's a specific process to go through with that.
So, so you mentioned, you, you and Laurie go to Avalon and check to make sure that they're doing things right. So there, there's still the same amount of affordable units in Avalon, both Avalons and as, when they were built? And you guys monitor them once a year? What, what's to say that you catch one that's not, not eligible and they've been in there for nine months, what happens? I don't want, I don't want anyone to leave their house, but something fell through the cracks and, and there's, there's a more deserving family out there that needs that apartment really bad, but there's someone that is in there that's less deserving. What, what's the outcome?
Well, I guess we would, we would bring that to Avalon's attention and they would, they would have to go through their process of trying to move that person to a market-rate unit so that that affordable unit's available for someone who qualifies. But we haven't found any cases of that to date. They do a great job.
That's a great, and Metro's the same and?
Metro, we haven't monitored, the state, the state monitors that. So we've been monitoring Avalon on Ballerville for three years now and the Avalon Oaks, this was our first year going there because they just paid their loans off.
Well, thank you. And I'm only going to mention, because you mentioned it, Laurie's helping you with the inclusionary bylaw. Is that going to be something that's going to happen relatively sooner rather than later or be in front of us?
Yeah, I am, I'm, my goal is to have it ready for, for discussion at the planning board all through the summer on all the details and have something ready to present to everyone this fall and go to town meeting with a bylaw.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Gingrich, you mentioned the two Avalon properties, the town is now the agent to monitor. That's an obligation that we, we have to fulfill through the state, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we're essentially, this regional assessment, we're basically crowdsourcing rather than hire somebody to do it just for Wilmington. We've kind of grouped up with a couple of different communities so that that one person can do it and we can kind of at least share the cost of salary and benefits and potential retirement, right?
Right. And actually their, their office was helpful in when we crafted a new regulatory agreement with Avalon, their office helped us actually write into that agreement a small fee for those monitoring services so that at least, you know, that time being spent is a little bit, you know, recouped in a way. So, you know, the office, that housing office has been a real resource and, in helping us look out for, for what we're doing.
Okay, and this, the fee structure is basically pay as you play, right? It's, you pay for how much you utilize-
Right.
-her services, okay. Well, then I agree, I think Saugus should have to pay more than, than everybody else, but.
You're doing good, you're catching on.
Thank you, Ms. Gingrich.
Thank you.
Mr. Biddle, you had a couple more questions? Yes.
Thank you, Valerie, for being here. Couple of questions if I could. Talked about her visiting twice a month, usually in the morning. I mean, as the highest-paying member of this agreement, any chance perhaps may she want to look into joining us in the evening sometimes, so folks maybe who work could, I mean, I think the last one was like, I don't know, don't quote me, but nine, 10 o'clock in the morning, you know, for someone who works a day job, maybe perhaps she might want to take a visit, you know, as the, like I said, the highest, picking up the biggest burden of this financially, you know, it wouldn't hurt that. I would like to see a third trip to Wilmington, maybe in the evening. I don't know if that would be beneficial for folks, I don't know what the attendance is like. You know, in full disclosure, I haven't, I haven't been able to make it because I work, you know, during the day, so I don't know what, maybe you have an idea what the attendance is like during the day?
I think she gets one or two people stopping in when she's visiting. She stays usually nine to 12 during the morning. But I could talk to her to see if an evening could work for her and, and we could see if, if people find that helpful.
Yeah, I mean, if you're saying one or two people in a three-hour span, I mean, I don't think it would hurt to try to maybe put something in the evening where someone could come home from work and have questions answered maybe in, in sometime in the evening just to give it a shot. I don't, I don't think maybe it's going to be the end-all, be-all, but definitely I share some concerns from my colleagues about the cost. I mean, another question I have for you, and maybe you don't know the answer, maybe you do, on this agreement, have the other three towns already signed on to this or in the process of?
I know Saugus has signed it and I think, and the other two were, I think, on the similar timeline as us. So everybody's sort of working on their agreement, part of their agreements being signed.
And so with all due respect to you, because I know you mentioned that this is a huge resource for yourself and your office, what would be the case say if this board was to deny this and say, you know what, just think it's too much of a cost for us?
I would have to do more work.
Well, I mean, you could do more work in terms of if it went away altogether, but what if we wanted to come back and say, you know, geez, you know, 36% seems like an awful lot, we'd like to be at 30% or 25%. I mean, just for thought here.
Yeah, no, if we wanted to change the percentage and cut our hours, we would need to talk to the other towns and see who would want to pick up hours, if anyone would want to pick up some more hours. It's sort of, right now it's sort of, you know, her, her salary is, is what it is and then it's divided among, amongst the group. So we would have to take that back and, and see what the other towns would want to do.
And so all, this percentage that adds up to 100, obviously that's, that's her salary and her salary only. Are there any other costs associated with?
No, there are some costs. There's a small amount, I think it's $500 for professional development. There's $5,000 for an expert kind of consultant within that. So, and actually she was here one night, her name is Liz. So Liz has been sort of mentoring Laurie with housing-related issues and that's part of, of this cost.
So I'm not being funny, but the consultant has a consultant, basically?
Yes, yes. And, I know it does sound funny. And Liz is the, the Housing Service Office, she runs that office in Concord, Lexington and Sudbury. So she runs a different one of these elsewhere. And she's been mentoring Laurie on how to run this office and getting her up to speed with all of the complexities that go along with it. And so she's basically training her. And I think there's maybe some other small expense items, but mostly it goes to her salary.
Okay, so my last question for you is, in, in your time here, how often have you used the $5,000 consultant's consultant?
Pretty often, actually. She's really helpful. She's at all of our bi-monthly meetings and she's very in tune with what the state is doing, with their policies as far as what you can ask for for local preference, the requirement for you have to have three-bedroom units within every development now, what they're doing with over-55 housing as far as you can't restrict children from those developments. So there's lots of policies that the state has recently kind of, I guess, amended or crafted. And she's very in touch with those. She is really well-versed in the field and she's very, very helpful. Yeah.
All right, I appreciate your answers. I mean, you can imagine, you can appreciate where we're trying to save costs wherever we can, we have to get creative, so appreciate you answering those questions.
Is, is the, I just want to clarify, the consultant fee, is that $5,000 part of this or is that over and above?
It's part of this.
So the $62,000 figure for a salary includes the $5,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to, just to be clear, so if, if the intent is to reduce the number of, of the cost that the town is bearing, the consequence of that is we have fewer hours to access their services, is that correct?
Right, and we would have to work out the agreement with the other three towns to make it work. Someone would either have to pick up hours or there would be a pay cut or, or some, something.
So, I mean, it's, it's my understanding that we are using the hours that we have at hand and it-
We are.
-to the extent that we cut the hours, we have access to this person, presumably you're going to have to pick up those responsibilities.
Correct.
So I guess right now, so we get 36% of the 40 hours to Wilmington, whatever that is, that's like 14 hours, I would assume?
Yeah, I think it's-
Looking at it quick.
When I did my math, I think it's 15 a week, about 58 per month.
All right. I'm sorry, what was that, for hours?
Yes.
What was the number again?
15 per week was my, my calculation. I think it's a 35 or 37 hour work week.
You said 58 hours per month?
Yeah, that was my, my calculation. I guess it's about 60, yeah.
How's it, how's she monitored? Just by work production?
Yeah, and, I mean, we're in touch with her all the time because she's, she's doing things for us. And actually their, their office right now is working on, working with Karen, the assessor, to, to look at, to double-check our, our values that we have on our affordable units for valuation. So they're not just helpful in, in my office, they're actually working with the assessing department as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, the $5,000's in this figure?
Yes.
Okay. And how about the 500 in the figure too?
Everything's in that figure.
Okay.
Chip, what are you looking for, motion from the board?
Yes, I would be looking for a motion for, from the board to authorize this agreement and to sign off on it.
All right, maybe in the future we look at the percentages, but it sounds like we're going to, we're committed to do this right now.
Subject to the board, but-
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like I said, I think that we use those hours. I don't, when we come to a point, if we, if we come to a point where we want to do less hours or just do less cost, we can always visit that.
I, you know, I, I would have a problem with this. Well, I guess, and I'm not talking about doing less, less percentage, I guess my problem is, is that should it be reevaluated after the first year? So that if we, if our percentage of affordable housing falls to such where she doesn't spend 36% of her time, but we're paying her 36% of the time, you know what I'm, you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
And rather than us saying, oh, we're not going to pay 36, we're going to pay 30 or 25. No, if it's 36, it's 36, but if next fiscal year, we get to a situation where Reading, Saugus and North Reading jump above us, I think it should be reevaluated so that the percentages change. That's why I asked for a sliding scale. I think a contract can be worked that way so that everybody gets their bang for their buck. And if we're paying someone else's buck for their bang, I don't know that that's really fair.
Right.
So, that's where I'm getting at.
If I could, to Mr. Kira's point, I think it's section five here on page two where it talks about the membership fee adjustments. And just for the audience, the advisory committee will review the membership fee annually three months prior to the end of the fiscal year. I think to Mr. Kira's point, it's almost like I would like to see that earlier than three months. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's in there for us to adjust, if that's what that clause means, then it's, then it's there for us to adjust. That's, and that's what I was asking, so.
To your point, I see that the term of this contract goes through the end of June 2020, it's a two-year contract.
Right.
So it's not going to be too long before we're back looking at what's happening and, I mean, this is going to be ending right in the middle of 2020 when the census is coming. So I would imagine that, that she's going to be pretty busy over the next two years, not just with Wilmington but with North Reading and with Reading and Saugus as well, because they have more ground to make up than we do. So I, I recognize and I appreciate your point, Mr. Kira. I think that the agreement as it's actually written does provide for some scalability and some sliding as the, the needs of this professional, or that the workload of this professional is fluid. And we'll be back here in two years to kind of see where we are and I would expect that those percentages are going to change quite a bit over the next couple of years.
Well, that's fine, Mr. Eaton, but we're talking about two years. All I'm talking about is having a change after the first year of the contract to have it. And if this section five allows that to happen, then that's fine with me.
It does. It's annually.
And if I could, we do track, every month, we look at those, those hours, so we keep track of, of how we're, we're moving forward. And if a, a big project comes up in Saugus or, or Reading or somewhere and they want more hours and, you know, we don't have as much going on, there's always sort of that, you know, we can always talk about, okay, well, why don't you take a chunk of our hours and then you'll pay for those hours? We can have that discussion if, if something kind of goes in that direction. So far though, we've, we've seen that, that we're really, we're really pretty consistent when it comes to our hours because she's doing certain things that are pretty administrative. It's not that something huge happens and all of a sudden we need or don't need a lot of hours, it's pretty steady.
So Mr. McCoy, if I may, I'll close with this. I, I'm prepared to support this under your recommendation, but I would really like to see whether it's added to this or you just have it offline with her, that if we could add an additional meeting here in Wilmington, perhaps in the evening, so that residents, you know, could get more access to her, I think that would be really beneficial for folks.
Fine. Well, Sid, Chip?
Make a formal motion, I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Slutman Loud, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Slutman Eaton, are those in favor? You're unanimous. All right, thank you, Valerie. I guess you're not going anywhere. This brings us to our next appointment, Valerie Gingrich, Director and Planning and Conservation, and Kristin Costa, Relative to Spruce Farm, Over-55 Affordable Housing. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
Thanks.
So we're here to answer questions that the board might have on our application that's before you for Spruce Farm. So Spruce Farm is the over-55 condo development that's being constructed currently off of Vandover Street. There's 27 units up there and three of those units will be affordable units. Those three units were required through our over-55 housing district in our zoning and it's the only district that we have that has an inclusionary aspect to it, so it's finally being used, which is great. And this application talks a little bit about the, gives an overview of what the development is. It sets the sale price, which I think is about $214,000 for a unit. And it provides a draft regulatory agreement that will govern those units. It provides the condo docs and the condo fees, I believe, are set at $87 per month. And then it also outlines the, the fair housing marketing plan, which talks about how the housing lottery will function. So there's a lottery, and Kristin can explain this in more detail than me, but generally it's a, it's a lottery that you enter, there's a preference for Wilmington residents for two out of the three units. And so that, that plan talks about how that, how that lottery will function, where it will be advertised and who it will be advertised to. And there's a lot of detail in there, I didn't want to go into too much of it, but if you have any questions, I'm sure Kristin or I could, could answer those for you. Oh, one important thing, you're, it's before you tonight because, because those units are required of our local zoning bylaw, the town has to sign off on the application to the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state for them to count on our 10% subsidized housing inventory. So the town is actually the applicant for these because we required them through our zoning. So Kristin put together the packet and all the information for the developer and, and then the, the town is actually applying to have those count towards our 10%.
Okay, very good. Yes, I'll, good, Mr. Biddle.
Thank you. Good evening to you.
Good evening.
And I just want to make sure I have this right. I mean, reading through this, I think it's pretty cut and dry here. Basically you're looking for us to, to vote for this and this basically increases the number of affordable units we have in town. Sounds like a no-brainer to me. Thank you.
You mentioned the town is applying for affordable housing. Would we get it or?
For them to count.
I mean, would we get it, right? They can't, and would they, is there a possibility of them denying it or whether?
Only if the, only if there was something amiss in this, in the paperwork, you know, if there was, if we were saying, you know, if we weren't, if we weren't abiding by the fair housing laws-
You know, if there was, if we were saying, um, you know, if we weren't, if we weren't abiding by the fair housing laws or, or something like that, then they would have a problem with that, but, but no, they, this is positive on everybody's, yeah.
How about, um, someone getting a, an affordable house for this price that's listed here, the two fourteen? After five or six years of living there, they decide to move on and they wanna sell. How does something like that work? Do they sell it? Does, does the woman in Redding help keep that sale down? How does, what is the price?
Sure. There's a deed rider that goes on record when, when somebody buys an affordable unit. The deed rider itself maintains the affordability in perpetuity, and it describes how the resale would work. We actually boil it down into a disclosure that they also sign so they can actually understand it better, because it's not as long. But basically, they have to notify the state, provide, um, an appraisal for the unit, and then the state does a fancy multiplier to determine what the resale price should be, given, um, factors at that time, what the income limits are, that kind of thing. If it's five years from now versus ten or so forth. And then they hire someone like me to resell that unit. And they build in a resale fee as well. So the buyer is paying whatever the sale price they determined to be, the state, and then they add the resale price in, I'm, I'm sorry, the resale fee in as well. Um, it didn't used to be that way. The town or state used to have to pick that up. Now essentially, the buyer is. And then I would find an affordable buyer to.
And so these three units will remain affordable forever, and you're working for, for who?
Myself. I'm a certified housing consultant for the state.
Okay.
But I have my own company, L.A. Associates. Some of you have recognized me, yeah. I've been in front of some of you.
Is that someone that you got or is that the state?
The developer hired me, actually.
Oh, the developer, okay.
To put together this package, the application, and then ultimately do the lottery, yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody on this side? Eddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kristen, um, the, there's only two units reserved for Wilmington residents. Is there a reason why? I mean?
Local preference only allows for seventy percent. They can't have a hundred percent. The state doesn't allow for a hundred percent.
What if, I mean, is there a chance you would pick three Wilmington residents?
Oh, you could, sure, sure. The, um, the way a local preference works is when, when there is one, the lottery has two pools. A general pool for people that are not local preference, and then a pool for local preference. Anybody in, that qualifies as local preference gets a, their ballot in both pools. So they kind of have two shots at it. So they're getting a shot at all three units in a sense, where the general pool is just the one unit. So yes, they could all end up being local, yes.
And I, I know that you were part of Whispering Pines. Do you remember what, how many Wilmington residents applied or, or was that a success?
It was, yeah, I can't say we were this many.
I was just curious.
There were many. In fact, I've done a few resales there too as well, and, and not all, but a couple have also been local.
I wasn't, wasn't part of the, I was wondering why it was only ten percent, Valerie. Why, why not? Because we're, we're actually not really gaining anything. I don't wanna be in Mr. Negative here, but we're not really gaining anything. We're gaining, um, three, a third, two, three-thirds of a house towards our ten percent. Because you're adding twenty-seven units to ours, but we're, we're only getting three affor, affordable. So to get ahead on the ten percent, it would like to be over ten, over ten percent. Why, why is it only ten percent? I was just curious. When I read this, I was like, ten percent, because every other one that I've been involved in, Whispering, Whispering Pines started at thirty percent, went down to twenty-eight to twenty-five, and then eventually twenty. And that, that's the lowest number, um, that we've really accepted in the past, and I was very curious why this was only ten percent.
So the Whispering Pines was a, a comprehensive permit, so you have to do a higher percentage, twenty-five, twenty to, I think twenty's a minimum.
Right, it is.
And the, these units are, um, through our local zoning. So when they created, um, the over fifty-five housing overlay district in our zoning, it was written as a requirement for ten, at least ten percent of the units affordable. In that zoning, there is a, a provision that you can do. If, if you do twenty-five percent affordable, you get a density bonus, um, and you go up to ten units per acre. But you don't have to do that twenty-five percent affordable. Um, you can do it, but you have to do the ten percent. And that's how they wrote it, and, um, I think that was adopted, um, in the two thousands, um, maybe.
Well, Whispering Pines would have been built on that. But I noticed that the, the affordables are all part of a duplex and not, they're not separate homes. Is there a reason why that is? In the past, we've liked to spread those, those three affordables out. I don't know where they are gonna be on this property. I'm, I'm just trying to be fair to everyone here, especially the town.
They are spread out, um, but they are also duplex units. I don't know.
Yeah, we, through the, um, through the special permit process, through the planning board, um, we identified the specific units that would be, um, the units.
I didn't see them highlighted anywhere on what we got. I, I was looking at this map here.
So if you have the, um.
Ten, seventeen, and twenty-four.
So you have the site plan in front of you.
Yep.
It's, um, number ten, which is in the bottom right corner.
Yep.
Uh, seventeen, which is in kind of the top right corner. And there was twenty-seven, right?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
I thought I had twenty-four.
Twenty-four is in the center. So, um, where there's a, where there's mostly duplex units, um, we thought it was okay to be duplex units. And then we kind of spread them around.
Thank you.
Within.
That's excellent, that's awesome. When, when is the projected, um, projected time of, um, completion or start to sell these, Kristen?
The state, once they do approve the package, will, um, which would take, yeah, a month or two, once it's submitted, and then they'll give you a go-ahead to start marketing. It's gonna be more on when the developer's ready. He's broken ground, but.
I saw that.
The weather wasn't cooperative until now, so it, it's more when he's, can deliver them. I don't wanna do a lottery and then have units and people waiting half a year or more, you know?
And we require this application be submitted before he gets any building permits, just to make sure that it happens.
I think it's awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Get any comment at all you'd like to make?
Um, good.
You need us to sign off?
Yes, this would require a vote, uh, authorizing the approval of this application and then a sign-off.
Just to touch upon what Mr. Loud said, I'm really kind of happy to see that those affordables are all spread out. And that says a lot. That means something. All right, uh, is there a motion on the floor as described by the town manager? Motion by Sluckman Eaton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sluckman Kira. Are those in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, tonight we have the reorganization of the Board of Sluckman. I'll just wait for these ladies. Yeah, thank you. I'll take your time, sorry. Thank you. All right, tonight at eight o'clock, we have reorganization of the Board of Sluckman. In the past, what the board has done is if somebody would like to make a motion to nominate somebody as chairman, then I'll call for a second. And if there's at least three, uh, voting people to vote in a majority, then that person will be obviously the next chairman. That's how we've done it in the past. So if anybody wants to entertain a person, uh, is a motion for chairman, just, anybody can do that right now at the moment?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kira.
All right, Mr. Bendel has nominated Mr. Kira. So there's a motion made on the floor to nominate Mr. Kira. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, there's a second by Sluckman Loud. All right, are those in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Supa.
I'm gonna, you don't mind if I bring my water?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right.
All right, we'll do that. It's a good suggestion. This is, uh, an odd procedure, but one that's done every, every year. I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Bendel for the nomination and, uh, Mr. Loud for the second, and unanimous vote of, uh, of confidence that you have in me to be the chairman for the next year. Thank you all. Okay, um, Mr. Hull, Communications?
Yes, first, under Communications, uh, is a memo, uh, to the board regarding town council interviews. As you know, uh, there was a committee put together to, uh, review, uh, the proposals that came, uh, before the town. Denise Casey, the Assistant Town Manager and H.R. Director, Mike Begonis, uh, Police Chief, Valerie Gingrich, Planning and Conservation Director, George Hooper, Superintendent of Public Buildings, Karen Rashes, Principal Assessor, and Mike Woods, Public Works Director, and myself, reviewed the, uh, proposals that, uh, came forward. There's five firms, uh, that we, uh, interviewed. And they are Brooks and Durensis, K.P., uh, Law, Murphy Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane, Mead, Tellerman, and Costa, and Collins, Lofgren, and Peliquin. Uh, I would note that of those five firms, Collins, Lofgren, and Peliquin, uh, exclusively, uh, work in labor and employment. They don't, uh, perform the full, uh, range of legal services, but, uh, clearly have, uh, been a longstanding, uh, firm in the business of, uh, labor and employment. There's a series of comments that were included, uh, in this memo to the board that addresses each of the firms. Certainly, there are, um, strengths, uh, with each of the firms, areas that, uh, we recommend that if you do decide to interview these firms, that you, uh, follow up with, uh, questions on. And so what I would, uh, recommend is that the board this evening, uh, decide on, uh, dates that you would be available, uh, to conduct interviews, uh, with the firms. I think it would be advisable, just from a timing standpoint, to, uh, conduct the interviews outside of your normal, uh, board meetings. And, you know, look at identifying, uh, you know, depending upon, uh, the number of firms you choose to interview, perhaps, uh, six or so, uh, different interview times. I did suggest, uh, some times here, uh, Monday, May first, uh, or, uh, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, May twenty-first, or, uh, Tuesday, May twenty-second, or Wednesday, the twenty-third. It's my understanding there may be a conflict, uh, with one or more members, so you may wanna look at other dates. Uh, one of the things that I think is important to consider, uh, is that your board meetings in, uh, June are the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. I think it would be advantageous, uh, to conduct the interviews, uh, so that you're able to make a decision at your meeting on June eleventh. And then that provides a couple of weeks of transition, uh, time in the event there is transition. Some of the things that would need to happen if there was a transition in council, the various legal, uh, the various, uh, venues where we have cases would need to be notified of new council. There would also need to be a transition in terms of records. Uh, so those are just, um, suggestions.
Okay, um, should we discuss dates tonight? Or do you wanna take, um, everybody take an opportunity to look at your calendars and get back to us by email as to what date you have available? We could be here all night.
He emailed, uh, the town manager, I am gonna be out of the country the weeks that, the dates that he's, uh, suggested. I unfortunately have to go to the Bahamas for a wedding. It's tough. Someone has to do it, I guess, but, but I will, my nephew's getting married next week and I will not be able to those dates. So, I mean, I, I'm available the week after or the first week of June. But like you suggested, maybe everyone looks at their calendars, because it is a very time-crunching.
Yeah, e- even if we have to make the decision on the twenty-fifth, which may, may likely be the case. So if we looked at our schedules from the twentieth of May through, say, the fifteenth of June, as to what everybody has available, now, how does that work?
So I, I guess dates that I, I would perhaps, I don't know if, if people have their calendars with them tonight. I think it would be advantageous to try to do it this evening. If that's, if that's not possible, then we can, uh, work through that. But May thirtieth, for example, or May thirty-first, uh, are dates, uh, that I would propose as alternatives, or June fourth, sixth, or seventh.
Mike, I, I'm available the twenty-first of May, the thirtieth of June, and the seventh of June. I'm on a work conference from the fourth to the sixth of June. I don't have a problem with doing it on a Friday either, but I don't know about my colleagues on the board, or the, or the firms, if they wanna come in on a Friday.
I'm available all of the dates that you suggested that I am too.
Yep. I'm available the twenty-first and twenty-second as suggested. The thirtieth is, uh, our scholarship night, and the seventh is graduation, so I gotta avoid those.
Okay, and it's, so it sells, and, um, so Sluckman Kira, you're only.
And I gotta send it to my wife before I commit to a Friday.
How about, yeah, how about the week of the eleventh of June? I mean, okay.
We meet the eleventh.
I understand that, but if we wanted to be separate, it would be the twelfth, thirteen, fourteen. I mean, that means that we're gonna be together all week long.
The thirteenth is gonna be a pretty busy night here.
What is?
So it's only Board of Appeals meeting.
Yeah, we keep that in mind.
Yeah, what, this time around, we need to keep that in mind, the meeting ones and all that as well. So what's, June thirteenth is, yeah.
Well, we can go down to the week of the eighteenth as well. I mean, we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth. That's why I'm saying we can talk about this all night, or we can just.
How about we just pick one?
Everybody send.
Move forward, huh?
Yeah.
Start with one? If we can nail down one date.
So the twenty-first is out, right? And you're, you're away, the thirtieth?
I'm, I won't be, uh, scholarship night.
Seventh is no good for you.
Yeah, he mentioned the thirty-first.
You talking June twelfth, was it?
How about the thirty-first?
Thirty-first of May, what day is that on? A Thursday night?
Thursday.
Thursday night.
May thirty-first?
No, that's no good.
June fifth?
Which is on a Tuesday, June fifth?
I can do June sixth.
All right, June.
I can do June fifth.
But I can do.
Could do the sixth.
I can do any night. June sixth?
I'm away.
Just so that everyone in the audience knows, we just got this on Friday night.
Yeah, we just received this.
Let's look at some days.
Look at this, I'm the chairman and it's already.
I mean, call your lady and say, can't make that happen anyway.
That's the only date people seem to be.
June sixth looks doable for everybody?
June sixth, yeah, June sixth, that's one, six.
All right.
All right, so we would assume that we could do two and one night. Is that what we're looking at?
I would say we made, shoot for, well, I would think three possibly.
Yeah, we could, we could bang out three. Just have a coffee.
Yeah.
I don't know. What do we have, five? We do two and three. We have five, we have five, um.
Well, as Jeff said, there was one that.
Well, just to.
Five out of six.
Yeah. There, there were six firms that, uh, submitted, uh, letters of interest or applications. One firm, we didn't deem had the, uh, experience, so there's five that we interviewed.
I would just suggest if we're gonna do three, maybe we could start a little early instead of starting a third one at nine.
Oh, no, I think we would start at six. If we're doing, if we're doing three, we'd, we'd go from six to seven. Just then seven-thirty to eight-thirty, that would, that would be pretty late then, then nine to ten to do three. And I leave a half hour in between each one, only in case this, we run over.
Yep. We've done that in the past, we've run over a few times.
Well, let's just do two and one eight, two and just one, make it early.
Yeah, how about the sixth, the twelfth, and the, uh, fourteenth?
I say that with June sixth, that seems fine. What other day? You said June what?
Twelfth and fourteen.
Twelfth.
I won't be here the fourteenth.
All right, so you can be here the twelfth. What about, let's do one out of ten?
All right, so the twelfth is good, June twelfth for everybody? I know that's after your planned schedule.
Yeah, I need one more, right?
And someone said the thirteenth was no good, right? Because that's the Board of Appeals.
I'm hoping we just can do it in two days, right?
Yeah, we don't need three.
I hope so. Why don't we do two the first night on June sixth to see just how long it may go?
Okay, so six and twelve.
Six and twelve. And we'll schedule two for the sixth and.
Potentially three.
Three for the thirteenth.
I just wanna write this down, so we're gonna do two on the June sixth, correct?
Yeah.
And do what, on June twelfth, two?
June twelfth would be three.
Three.
With a start time of six-thirty?
Six o'clock.
He's recommended six-thirty.
Oh, it's six.
I say six works better.
Yeah, six would be fine with me. So how's that work for you? Because you're traveling, right, from work?
I'll, I'll make it work.
Okay, June sixth and June twelfth. We'll do two on June sixth, we'll do three on June twelfth. We'll start at six o'clock.
For both nights.
For both nights.
All right.
All right.
Good.
And what night did you say the detox hearing's going to be? Is June 13th? All right, just want to make sure. All right.
Unless the Celtics are in the finals, I mean.
All right.
If we got through that, we can get through anything.
That's right. So next, under correspondence, is a memo with regard to deployment of AED units in town property. There was some conversation about the prospect of trying to locate AED devices at various town parks or fields around, in town here. There are a number of different issues that make that a bit of a challenge. One is to put the devices, in the case of Yentile, for example, Rotary Park, to mount them on buildings is likely to, they're not going to be there that long. I think it's, given the cost of these units, it's a ready theft item, so I wouldn't recommend mounting them on the outside of buildings. The other issue that we have to be mindful of is that they're sensitive to temperature extremes, whether hot or cold. So I think that is not a good option. We could locate them in buildings. In fact, there is one in the concession building at the Yentile. One of the challenges there is that the organization that permits, in the case of Yentile, if they are looking to use the concession building, then they have access to the concession building. If there's an organization that is looking to use the field but has not requested access to the concession building, won't have access to the AED device. That also applies for anybody that might be over there that doesn't have a permit but just happens to be in and around the park, and similar to any of these other locations, that an AED, AED device would not be automatically available. The other thought was to require that the various organizations, whether it's youth hockey, I mean, youth lacrosse, youth soccer, bring their own AED devices, or anybody that takes a permit out, that's certainly a possibility. One of the challenges we run into there is that it isn't just youth lacrosse and youth soccer that look to use the fields. We have a cricket group, for example, that is a, it's kind, I don't know that it's a formal organization, but a group of people that have requested access to one or more of the fields. The likelihood that they're going to want to spend $1,500 on a AED device is probably a bit of a strain for them as opposed to a maybe larger group. You also have the issue in the case of, even the larger groups like Little League, you get, have multiple games going on at various fields throughout town, so they would have to have multiple devices or be running back and forth, switching them. I don't, I don't believe it would be advisable for the town to buy five or 10 of these, because in part, you've got the issue of inventory control and just trying to track who has them and who has them when. They have to be maintained, so there's, my recommendation, long and short of it, is that one way we could perhaps, you know, be more responsive is to encourage residents to take the CPR courses. We can certainly post where the courses are available. It used to be that the rec department offered CPR courses, but over the more recent years, the interest has waned to some measure, and we've not had the numbers to be able to run the program, but there are certainly other organizations that do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bendel.
If I could, Mr. Hall, thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. I was one of the people who asked for this to be looked into, but I really think that I have to disagree with some of the comments you have, because I think we have $100 million budget. I think we need to make this a priority. If it's a $1,300 item, I think we really need to be able to find a way to make this happen, because, I mean, anybody who tried to park here tonight saw how packed the place was. There's a ton of kids playing ball over there, and that's fantastic. We just heard from Karen about how much our facilities are being used. We have some of the most beautiful parks in all the area, and they're constantly being used, and I think we need to find a way, you know, I think, you know, just because they, they can't be out in the weather, let's find an alternative. You know, let's have it in a storage shed, let's have it in a snack shack. Let's find a place for these, because I think it's a priority. We learned firsthand, unfortunately, with the tragic events that happened at the Little League Parade, and our first responders were fantastic, they were right there, but what's to say if they weren't right there? I really think this needs to be our priority, and if I have to lead a fundraising effort to get these, I think we need to get them. I think we should have them perhaps available to groups that are going to have large functions, and if not, they ought to be stored somewhere nearby. I think this really needs to be a priority for these $1,300 items in $100 million-plus budget. That's just my opinion.
Just to be clear, they, they are available at Yentile. There is one in the concession.
Not all the parks, though.
The Shawshin Fields, I believe, youth soccer has one in their concession building. Again, if you're, if someone's out there, kids are playing at the playground or at the basketball court, and there's an incident, they're not going to have access to that concession building, so it doesn't help them. There's, my understanding, there's one in this concession building here. Pop Warner has, but again, if someone is out there doing something other than playing football, they're not going to have access necessarily to that.
I just think we, maybe we can find a creative way. And forgive me for not having a solution here tonight, but I just really think we shouldn't just give up and throw our hands up, because we can't find a safe place to store them. I think we need to stay on this to make sure that every park in this community has one available to it.
Do we, do we have an AED in this building?
Yes.
Okay, so when this building is open, the Little League sports teams out there would have access to it, if they realize that there's, if they know that there's one in here?
Yeah, if they know that there's one in here, but this building isn't always open, you know, when Little League is, is playing, you know, there's no meetings.
It's open more than the Pop Warner concession stand.
Right, right.
So, where they have no access to unless there's a game going on. Just like at Yentile, unless someone has the pass to get into that concession stand, there's no, no one has access to it.
And I guess this is my point, maybe let's take a look at, I mean, that's a great point that Mr. Kyra makes, but let's not drop this here and just say, well, I think we should, let's really take a look at where we have a weakness, and if we can improve it, let's find a way to do it. If money's a problem, we got to figure out a way.
I'm not suggesting money is a problem. I'm suggesting that the logistics of having these available is an issue. The other point, I think, is that, well, as I noted in this email, these units are relatively user-friendly. For the units that we have here and at other locations, we've had staff trained to use them. So could someone use one with, without any training? It's possible, but I know from one incident that I was told about, there was an incident that took place at one of the local gyms. They had an AED device there. The folks that were at the gym weren't familiar with how to use it, and there were certain steps that should have been taken that they just didn't, weren't aware of, and unfortunately, the device was, could not be used as effectively as it could have had people been trained. So even if we have devices, you know, out on the playing field, people need to know how to use them.
Is there any, are there any signs on any of the fields that do not have, I guess, without that limitation, are there any signs on any of the fields that identify where the nearest ones of these devices are? Like, behind us, is there anything that says that there's one of these devices in the town hall? And maybe we post that, that during normal business hours, if you need it, come in, and there are good Samaritan laws to protect the people that try and help that might not be able to, but I think providing access is better than not. And I, if the town hall's open and there's an emergency that happens, and somebody doesn't have a cell phone to call 911, they're probably running inside to say, someone's got to call 911, we need a situation, if there's somebody there with a tool that can help save somebody. I think maybe we pursue that.
Mr. Chairman, I happen to agree with Selectman Bendel, but another part of that is, we need to educate the people, and this memo talks about education. I think that's important. I've been trained on an AED, but it's outdated, and I would like to go to another CPR and AED class. They are becoming more and more user-friendly, the ones, especially the ones that speak to you, and they tell you exactly what. But if there's an emergency, how many people in this room are CPR or AED, or how to use an AED right now? Probably one, one or two or three of us, and that, I mean, that's all it really takes, but in a large crowd, to what Jeff says, it's, it's about the training, and we, we, as a community, I feel that we need to, I'm not saying offer a CPR class, or if there's enough people interested in it, put on our website, like it says it's, that we're going to do, but at least let people know where we can get CPR training, because I know there's two or three people in my family alone that would take advantage of that.
And the town does offer that, right? We've offered in the past?
We have offered the CPR through the rec department, but again, because of the lack of people signing up, they needed a certain number of individuals in order for the classes to be held, and so we have not offered it the last year or two.
I know, I believe Regional Health offers it on occasion as well.
Greg, you're the basketball coach. Do coaches, is it required for coaches to be?
Depends on the school. Sometimes it's not required, sometimes it's encouraged.
Little League or youth hockey coach in town, are they required? I think it would be required for, that way there, you guarantee someone on the field, or many people on the field are CPR or, and AED certified.
I mean, we saw that day at the Little League Parade, that there was a resident who just happened to be a doctor, and there was another one who happened to be an EMT. Thank goodness they were there, and alongside our, our first responders.
I think it needs to be pursued further, like you said, Greg. Thank you.
I just think we need to look into it. Certainly, there's obstacles. I mean, you guys all bring up good points. You know, it doesn't do us any good if no one has a key to get into town hall, and it's locked. I know that, but perhaps we can look into an alternative. I just think it's worth exploring.
Great.
Thank you.
Next is a letter from DeLorraine Pearson. This is regarding an emergency training, emergency preparedness training program that is being offered to members of the disabilities community. There's correspondence here dated April 17th, and they'll be holding a session here at the town hall on July 12th, 10:30 a.m. to noon. There are, as I understand it, 50 of these emergency backpacks, if you will, that will be available to attendees, and the session will be designed to provide assistance to those with disabilities in how to use those backpacks, so that if they're in a situation where they need medical attention, there's resources available.
And this will be publicized on the website?
Yes.
Through social media. So we're at Board to Consider items, and the first one we took care of, the scheduling of interviews for the town council, June 6th and June 12th. The next.
Next is correspondence from Lou Semaglia, the Director of Veteran Services. It is with the great pleasure that I write this letter on behalf, and with the permission of the Friends of Tim Ryan Organization. The Friends of Tim would like to donate and install a memorial bench at the flagpole in the Veterans Lot at the Wildwood Cemetery. Tim Ryan was a lifelong resident of Wilmington, a United States Marine Corps veteran. Tim served honorably and deployed twice to Afghanistan. Unfortunately, Tim lost his battle with PTSD on May 7, 2011. Tim was 23 years old and graduated from Wilmington High School in 2005. The Friends of Tim want to install a bench so people can sit and reflect when they visit the Veterans Lot. Thank you for your time and consideration with this matter. On a personal note, I knew Tim for many years and coached him in Wilmington Pop Warner Football. Tim was a fine young man and a stand-up Marine. He struggled with PTSD after his deployment, and as so many other veterans, he lost his life. I believe the bench would be a beautiful memory, memorial, not only to Tim, but for all those veterans we have lost to PTSD.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion made by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Next is a request from Karen Campbell, Recreation Director, for use of the Town Common for the Concert on the Common Series. The dates, she notes that concerts start at 6:30, run to 8 p.m. Wednesday, July 8th, with a rain date of Thursday, July 12th. Wednesday, July 18th, with a rain date of Thursday, July 19th. Wednesday, July 25th, with a rain date of August 8th, and that is because of the moving wall that will be on the Common. And then the final proposed date is Wednesday, August 1st, with a rain date of Thursday, August 2nd.
Your motion to accept the, the second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? The next item we took care of, adopting the set of fields use policy.
Next in, for the Board to consider, is signing the tax increment financing agreement. You certainly will recall that there's been a long series of discussions, starting in January, where Analog Devices proposed a tax increment financing agreement. There was a subcommittee that was established to go through negotiations on that. It was approved at the annual town meeting, most recently on May 5th. The terms, salient terms to this agreement are, first, that the Analog would receive $700,000 in waived permit fees towards their, construction of their facilities. You may recall that they're, in total, proposing to invest $157 million in renovations and new construction to their campus. $142.9 million will be new construction, including a parking garage, a so-called hub building, and office and research facilities. Also, the town would grant $4.3 million in property tax relief, so this would be, on the new construction only, waived property taxes for the value of that new construction. The term of this agreement would be for not more than eight years, a minimum of five years, not to exceed eight years, or if they reach the $4.3 million first, then the agreement would terminate at that point. Analog is responsible for maintaining their 1,555 full-time employees for the duration of the agreement. They would also propose adding, would be required to add 50 new jobs during the course of the agreement, specifically by or before December 31, 2024. In addition, they're required to relocate 450 full-time employees from some of their other locations, notably Norwood and Chelmsford, to the Wilmington location by December 31, 2024. They agree to construct 441,160 square feet of new space, as I previously noted. And in the event that there is any kind of a material default, or a failure of Analog Devices to meet the terms of this TIF, there is a, an allowance for the Board of Selectmen to bring them in, have a discussion about those issues, give them an opportunity to cure, so to speak. If they fail to address the issues, then the Board of Selectmen could seek decertification from the EACC, which is the state agency that ultimately would approve this agreement and potentially could and potentially could decertify them. So the plan, if the Board is so inclined to sign off on this agreement, is that this document, along with some other documentation, needs to go to the EACC by or before May 23rd and then the EACC, which is the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. Thanks, I'm blanking on that. They're the agency that is responsible for approving this. They would meet on June 22nd to consider this TIF.
Thank you, Mr. Ho. Is there a motion to accept?
I'd make a motion to enter the agreement as the town manager described the TIF program agreement with Analog as described by the town manager.
Motion by Mr. McCoy, seconded by Mr. Loud. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, briefly. So this is certainly a much, a better agreement than the draft that I had seen as a member of the Finance Committee two months ago or so. So I'm glad to see that a lot of, the concerns that I had seem to be addressed. I think this is a good long-term investment for the town. It keeps a lot of jobs in town. It brings more jobs to town and allows us to grow with the town's largest employer and third largest taxpayer. So, good job.
Anybody else? Just make one quick note that the retained full-time jobs did come down a bit. Mr. Ho, in a negotiation from, with Analog came down from what did they initially?
Originally, they were back in January when they submitted their introductory request, if you will, it was 1,600. Their numbers are at 1,555. Obviously, it fluctuates. In fact, in talking to Lynn Tocharczak, who is their consultant, they've got 30, I believe 33 openings for full-time positions right now, so the number goes up and down, but this is the number they're committed to maintaining.
That's great. I think it's a, like I said before, a win-win for the town and for Analog Devices. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Looks like the next two have been covered.
We did the next two. Yeah, the next two are related to what Valerie Gingrich had brought forward that we already took up. Is this email part of?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so we're on to public comments. The audience, yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin McDonald, 140 end of his feet, Wilmington. Good evening. Through you Chairman Kyra, just a few concerns and questions I have. First, I'd just like to ask a question for Chairman, I mean, Selectman Eaton. Mr. Eaton, congratulations on your victory. I have a flyer that you put out throughout the town and in it you say, "To have a senior center with a bathroom that is not handicap accessible is not acceptable." And I'd have to agree with you on that. So I was wondering tonight if you would consider putting forth a motion to have the manager address that situation almost immediately or get started on addressing that.
My own approach towards solving problems like that is not to do so on the fly. I think that's something that needs to be done with different departments speaking to each other and the Board of Selectmen really kind of pushing that issue forward. So I, I'm not prepared to make a motion on that tonight, but that's certainly not an issue that I'm going to be forgetting about because I do think that the space constraints of the senior center, it's not just limited to the bathroom issue, although that is a very significant issue, but the excellent job that Terry Marsiello and her staff does, they, they're not able to offer the full catalog of programs that they would like to because of some of the space constraints that the Bazell School actually has. Some of the programs that they're actually doing in the Fourth of July Building, which is obviously down the hill across the parking lot. So I appreciate the comments and the suggestion. This isn't something that I think that, I can speak for myself and I would imagine that my colleagues are also not going to be letting go by the wayside at all.
Would you be willing to put forth a motion to actually start the dialogue between departments?
I believe you asked and he answered, so I think we're all set on that. Thank you. What else do you have?
Okay. One of the items tonight was concerning legal counsel and one of the, I guess one of the questions that I have is how did you arrive at the firms that you're going to interview?
There was an RFP that was sent out for various firms from across the region to apply.
It was a wide, a widespread?
And I believe that there were six firms that...
Yes.
That applied and out of those six firms, five of them were vetted, they were all vetted, but five of them were suggested to be selected for interviews by a committee set up by the town manager. Those five firms were all given to us. We all have it. We have their, the synopsis that was given by, by the committee for us to read and review, including their packets that each of those firms sent. So now it's up to the Board of Selectmen to do their work and select out of those five. So...
Moving back to that, I was going to see if you could address this to the town that it's my understanding that the town's been using legal counsel services of our towns' insurance company and can you confirm that and speak a little bit about how that impacts any decrease in our legal services bill and what they, what they handle in particular as opposed to what the contracted services are? And also, in terms of signing an agreement, I've reviewed some contracts through obtaining them through public record requests and I noticed that there are multiple-year agreements. I know I'm asking about a legal counsel question, but I'll just use another contract as an example. Obviously, the legal counsel would have been involved in this, but it was for the school superintendent. They just signed a contract, it was, I believe the contract was for $190,000, multiple year.
Yeah, we have no jurisdiction over them signing that.
Well, my question is, how do you, how do you sign a multiple-year agreement without having any type of stipulation in that agreement as to whether or not town meeting approves that amount of money each year?
Under education reform, which was passed in 1993, the schools, once the appropriation is made at town meeting, the aggregate appropriation, the school committee can spend money as they deem appropriate. They can divvy that total sum up in any way they deem appropriate. So they're well within their rights to spend however much they are so inclined to with respect to a school superintendent.
Each year.
Each year.
But my question is, when it's a multiple-year agreement and town meeting has not met for the next year, how can you sign multiple-year agreements without having a stipulation in the contract that says subject to town meeting approval? Same with like the legal counsel contract that I suppose that you're going to sign. Shouldn't there be specific language that says conditional upon town meeting approval?
Typically, that is the case in, in terms of multi-year contracts. I have not seen specifically the school contract, but typically a multi-year contract is subject to appropriation. We have similar contracts with our collective bargaining agreements for employees that are multi-year agreements that are, are signed over the course of a three-year period. So this is not unusual, the fact that there is a multi-year agreement with the school superintendent.
I understand what you're saying about it not being unusual, but if things have been done maybe inappropriately so that they seem usual...
I don't, I don't think it was done inappropriately. I think it was just answered to you as how it was done. So do you have another question other than?
I didn't get the concern addressed about the legal counsel services of our insurance company and what they're handling versus what the contracted counsel services are handling.
So the instances in which insurance counsel is called upon is very limited. It all depends upon whether there is an insurance claim that has been filed and whether the insurance carrier, it covers that claim and will provide defense coverage. So we do have a few instances, but clearly the bulk of the legal services that the town receives is through town council and insurance counsel is really the exception.
And just, just to address a past town meeting, there was minutes of the meeting that were approved and as I read them, the minutes of the meeting were like for three years ago. Whenever I go to an organization meeting, usually the minutes of the prior meeting are approved at the next meeting and it seems difficult for me to be able to understand or comprehend how you can approve minutes of a meeting from three years ago. How do you remember what went on in that meeting?
Well, I can, I can tell you that the minutes of the regular meeting are handled appropriately and sent out on a timely basis. If you're talking about executive session minutes, sometimes they take longer to release because there may be an ongoing issue and that's why you may get executive session minutes that are two years old, one year old, three years old, because throughout that whole process, there are issues that are being handled and until that process is completed and finalized, those minutes are not to be released. But as for regular, regular minutes to meetings that we have here, as far as I know, I think the members of the Board can say that we get them on a fairly regular basis and we review them and approve them and change them if we need to and sign them off. So I think we're...
Just the last thing that I just wanted to mention, I guess to offer a suggestion. Mr. Bendel, I appreciate his concern about the AED machines. Usually, I'll use construction supervisors as an example. Usually when you go on a job in terms of OSHA, they have a, what's called a responsible person and it seems to me that to address Mr. Bendel's concern would be relatively simple and that is have a responsible person who takes out the permit, who is given a key to a storage shed or a canteen. He's responsible for opening, he's responsible for locking it. That would be one suggestion. The other suggestion that I have is, I believe we have 50 cops in town. I think we have 40 firemen, maybe more. Why couldn't we deploy one public service official at events like at the Shawshine where there's hundreds of people? Have him stationed there with a vehicle with a radio so he can be accessible to another caller that comes in? And are all our cops CPR certified? If they're not, why not? And why can't we have either a police officer or a fire official that's got CPR certification stationed at events where there's, you know, hundreds of people?
Well, first of all, we don't have 50 cops on duty at any one time.
Are they all CPR certified?
I would have to check on that. I believe, I believe they are, but and there are a few that are actually EMT certified. Deploying all of our emergency personnel to be at the town fields when there's activities going on, I don't believe is the best use of their time. You know, there are any number of either emergencies that come up or in the case of police, just a host of issues that they're dealing with during the course of any shift. So expecting that they're going to just be stationed at the Shawshine or the Whitfield or the Bullburn Street or Town Park, I just don't think is, is an appropriate use of resources.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else for public comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald. New business? Why don't we start? Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Congratulations on your new chairmanship. I wish you well. I want to, I have a few things, if I may. It's been a couple of weeks and forgive me, but I want to stop by congratulating our new colleague, Mr. Eaton. I look forward to, to working with you and I wish you well as too. I also want to congratulate anyone who participated in the election. It's certainly not easy to put yourself out there and have, as someone who's done it two years ago, it takes a lot and so you should be applauded for wanting to volunteer for your community. So I congratulate all those who participated and I thank everyone for coming out to vote and also participating in town meeting. I want to give a couple shout-outs, if I can, quickly. Our 2018 Good Guy Award went out to Diana DeGiorio. Congratulations to her. Fantastic time. A number of my colleagues were there on Friday night to celebrate her, certainly well-deserving. So hats off to her. I want to give a big shout-out. It was well-publicized by our friends in the media over the weekend that one of our officers, his heroic acts potentially saved the lives of, of some of our residents on Ohio Street. There was a fire. Officer Skinner responded immediately and was able to get the family out in time. And when I called to thank him for his heroic efforts on Saturday, he quickly deferred the praise to his colleagues on the police and fire department who responded and were able to put the fire out. But he also acknowledged the heroic efforts of the neighbors who were the first to be there. So he just tells you about how humble he is that he quickly deferred any praise that he was given. But I really, hats off and we are really proud of him and all of our first responders. On that note, the Board received an email from a woman out of town who wanted to thank the town and the fire department and this particular individual who was off-duty at the time and, and actually responded to a woman who was hit by a vehicle, motor vehicle. And he was the first there to treat her and she later found out that it's one of our own firefighters and Rob Barry. So I wanted to give Rob a big shout-out and thank you, him for his efforts there. It just goes to show you that they go above and beyond even when they're not on duty. And then lastly, I would encourage folks, we won't meet again until Memorial Day, after Memorial Day, so I want to encourage people to come out and celebrate Memorial Day. Our Veterans Office does a fantastic job putting on several events that weekend and so I hope people will, will take that in. They always do. We always have a great showing on Memorial Day to support our veterans and I hope we have another beautiful day and a big crowd for the veterans. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just encourage this Board to take up at a future meeting, a further discussion on the economic, the possibility of an Economic Development Committee. I would really greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel.
Geez, I don't know if there's anything else to say on the new business.
Sorry.
I mean, you stole everything.
I want to take my paper back, Mr. Bendel, that I gave you to read.
No, just real quick, just to say, you know, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Kyra, in the unanimous support as chairman and as my good friend here, Mr. Bendel stated, it was a beautiful, wonderful night at the Knights of Columbus there when Mrs. DeGiorio won the Good Guy Award. I couldn't think of a better person to get that. Her husband, Michael, has given close to 30 years on the Fourth of July. Really super, super people and it was a great time and I was, I was happy to be there. And you said everything else.
It was a busy couple of weeks.
I'm all excited. Good, thank you.
Mr. Eaton?
I want to wish a happy belated Mother's Day to all the moms out there. My mom and my wife as well. I do want to thank the voters who came out two weeks ago, it's two weeks ago, right? It feels like years. They came out and voted whether you voted for me or for, not for me. It's, it truly is an honor to be up here and to serve the town. I will echo the comments of my colleagues. Mrs. DeGiorio is a fantastic person who volunteers very selflessly and has instilled that in her daughter, who also is quite involved in, in the community. that in her daughter, who also is quite involved in the community as well. And it was just a great event to celebrate one of Wilmington's true, just all-truistic volunteers. I want to congratulate our town moderator. I think, I thought he did an absolutely fantastic job moderating a nine-and-a-half-hour-long town meeting. I thought he handled himself very tactfully, and I don't know how he didn't take a break. I think that was an absolute feat of strength. But I think that's about it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's this time of night that I get to shout-out to a veteran, and I'm going to elaborate on what Greg spoke of, the activities that are going on Memorial Day weekend. But Harvey P. Hudson was a WWII veteran. He passed away on April 24th. Would have been 100 years old this month. What a great guy. Had a lot of history. He was a US Army, Company A, 3051. He was an engineer. He was a combat battalion. He had 10 engagements, including Normandy. He received, and this is a long, he received the European, African, Middle Eastern Theater Company ribbon with the bronze arrowhead. Lots of history. May he rest in peace and thank him for his service and him and his family. Really appreciate it. Longtime Wilmington resident. And quote-unquote from Mr. Slimega, a great, great guy, so. I also want to, I had written down everything. I got the schedule of events. I want to reiterate what's going on on Memorial Day weekend, because it's an important weekend for a lot of us, to honor the veterans. On Saturday, May 26th at 8:00 AM, decoration of the veterans' grave at Wildwood Cemetery. Public's invited. It's written on this program, and I wrote it in big, bold letters here. So it starts Saturday, the 26th. Then from there, they're going to go to all the squares and memorial parks, again, 10:15 at the veterans' gravesite at Wilmington Cemetery. Then Sunday, they have a couple of masses, then one at 11:00 AM, one at 1:00 PM, and then the rededication of the parks, squares, and monuments. And then on Monday is the big parade. The groups start meeting at 9:30, and the parade starts at 10:00 AM at Market Basket. 11:00 AM sharp, Veterans Lot, Soldiers Monumentary, the ceremony starts for Flag Day, Flag Ceremony in all color guards. So I just encourage everyone out there to participate in this big weekend for the veterans. They deserve everything that we get and what we can do, because they are protecting us every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess the best part about going last is that you don't have to say anything, except I echo the comments of all my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen. Once again, thank you so much for the vote of confidence that you have in me in taking over this responsibility over the next year. Congratulations, Mr. Eaton, for joining us. We all look forward to working closely with you. And of course, Diana De Gregorio, our Good Woman of the Year, Good Guy of the Year Award, and Officer Skinner and firefighter Barry for their acts of heroism over this past week. It's been a very busy two weeks, as Mr. Bendel said, and once again, I just echo the comments that my colleagues gave. Important dates, so.
Important dates, May 20th, Pan Mass Challenge Kids Bike Ride, Carter Lane, 8:00 AM to noon time. May 25th, deadline to submit applications to serve on the Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 11. May 28th, Memorial Day Parade, 10:00 AM. Ceremonies at the Wildwood Cemetery, 11:00 AM. Town offices will be closed. May 29th, Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. June 1st and 2nd, Council for the Arts, 38th Annual Art Exhibition, Friday from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Saturday from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. June 2nd is the Fishing Derby, Town Beach, 9:00 AM to noon. Also, June 2nd is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. June 3rd, Wilmington High School Graduation. June 3rd, Haddon Tavern Open House, 4:30 Salem Streets, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. June 6th is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. June 7th, Shaw Sheen Tech Graduation. June 8th, Rotary Trivia Night, Knights of Columbus. June 9th, a brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. June 9th, Townwide Yard Waste Sale, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. June 9th is the Town Beach opening for the summer. June 10th, Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. June 10th also is the Brady's Foundation 5K Run for Recovery. Town Common starts at 9:00 AM. June 11th is another Board of Selectmen's meeting here, Room 9, 7:00 PM. And then June 15th and 16th is the Wilmington Relay for Life, Wilmington High School, Friday afternoon into the evening, June 15th to Saturday morning, June 16th.
And that should do it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second, a motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you and good night.